Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today's Thursday, May the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. We appreciate your attendance and those that are listening online as well. Going into new business, I'm gonna skip down to number two to start with because I'm waiting on the sheriff. He's making a phone call back to his attorney, so he should be in here in a few minutes. Well, there he is. All right, come on in, Sheriff. So we'll start out with the presentation of intergovernmental agreement between Dawson County and the city of Dawsonville concerning two city-funded sheriff deputy positions. Sheriff Jeff Johnson, sure.
That's fine, woman.
All right.
Get it, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you. We'd have to vote on that at the, at the voting session to table it. We'll just move that forward. All right, next up, we have a presentation of application for parade and assembly five-star NTP North Georgia triathlon planning and development director Jameson Kinley, Jameson.
Hey, Chairman. North Georgia triathlon will be held, the North Georgia, Georgia triathlon will be held at Veterans Memorial Park on May twenty-second from eight AM to eleven AM. This entire event will be held within the confines of the park with the exception of the adult bike ride, which will go from Veterans Park to Mill Creek Trail, where the riders will turn around and then ride back to the park. Off-duty officers should be there assisting with all traffic control. And Mr. Star is expecting to have approximately one hundred and twenty-five participants. It should be noted, this time, we do not have GDOT's approval, as of that, and that hinges on some documentation that they'll have to provide to the applicant, by the applicant, but we should have that before the time of the voting session. I will entertain any questions.
Questions for Jameson? I think this is an annual event, correct?
It is.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Presentation of application for parade and assembly five-star NTP bootlegger triathlon, James.
This is a similar event, except it's going to be, it's called the bootlegger triathlon. This is the tenth year of this event. It is going to be held on September twelfth from eight AM to eleven AM. And once again, they will be doing the same type of trail back and forth to the Mill Creek Trail from Veterans Memorial Park. And they're also expecting one hundred and twenty-five participants, and the same GDOT approval is awaiting on this request as well.
Questions for James?
Is this a fundraiser?
That is an excellent question, and I'll have to get that.
Share, I think, how it is or sometimes.
It's my understanding, he's a for-profit entity that kind of, some of it goes to charity stuff. And following up with Sharon's question, and this is probably a parking wreck question for Matt. I know that we have entities like the, like the soccer program where we use our facilities, but it's, is that a for-profit group that handles that? And if it's so, do we get funds back from that for them using our facilities?
Let me, let me repeat it. Let me, let me start back over.
Oh, my gosh, you seriously? The soccer program that we have in place, so that's a third-party entity. That's not handled through our county parking wreck system.
That is correct.
They use our facility.
Yes.
Is that a for-profit third-party that, that performs that function for Dawson County? And if it is a for-profit, does Dawson County get reimbursed for the use of our facilities?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do have a contract in place that we charge per child, like in a roster per child.
So how is that different from something like this? That they're using the county facilities for profit.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm curious how.
The way that we would look at it from a recreational standpoint is simply a, we're looking at it as a rental. We're going to supply them with a facility just to hold.
So you are renting, you are, you do have rental, okay, okay.
Right.
That's.
Okay, yeah, it's not just a free event, right? There is a rental.
Okay.
But it's not a per-person rental.
Gotcha, but there is a rental component to it.
Yes.
Perfect. That's what I want.
Other questions for Jameson? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of acceptance of platted private roads to public roads in Sosby Creek and Sosby Point Residential Plan Communities, James.
Thank you, Chairman. So, well, as the chairman just stated, Sosby Creek and Sosby Point are seeking to resubmit their final plaits that would change their roads from privately to publicly maintained. Staff would like some direction on, on this from the board, since this is really outside the scope of our subdivision regulations. Due to the recent, the recent land use resolution change, where we removed the, the language that stated in residential plan communities zoning classification that all roads must be platted as private, private and maintained by the homeowners association. So as of right now, Sosby Creek and Sosby Point are looking to resubmit their final plaits that were originally submitted in December under, and remove the language that says that they are to be privately maintained. Just to reiterate, we're really looking for a decision whether or not we should accept these plaits and start reviewing them as public roads instead of private roads.
They would have to meet all the same qualifications of anybody else asking for a private road to become a county road, correct?
Correct.
Which means it would have to be looked at by Public Works and all the things that happens with that. I mean, anybody can ask, I would think.
Yeah.
But as they are currently in the process of land disturbance permit, that, that changes our final plating process because during our preliminary process, we did not review these as publicly maintained. So we didn't require all the same bonds and documentation. So we don't really have that process laid out in our subdivision regulations to accept that at this point. And it really, we, as staff, you know, the public works and planning and development, we were really looking for the board's direction on, is this a route that we want to pursue and kind of modify our, our, our regulations at this point?
So we made a change that is the reason they're coming before you and asking you this question already, right?
Correct.
We changed the ordinance. What's council say in reference to this?
Well, I guess first, their timeline for getting approval of this plat change is, would, if we were to change our ordinance to put in place the necessary protections that we would normally want to have, would, would changing the ordinance to protect us delay them or, or could we do the ordinance change first?
Assume we could.
You're not asking for an ordinance change, you're asking.
Well, so my, my concern is if, if in the ordinary course of accepting a road to become a public road, we have an ordinance or procedure in place to make sure that they have submitted bonds, to make sure that everything is in order to protect the county, but because of this kind of odd procedural situation here, our ordinance would not require those things in this case. I would say it would be most protective to change our ordinance or put in place a policy before agreeing to accept these roads. We could sort of wing it and, and, but, but I mean, that the safest course would be to change our ordinance, was don't do no winging.
No, why did we not change this when we changed this other piece? Why was that not ever brought up when we changed the language and other?
It wasn't considered with the land use resolution change. The, the land use resolution change was a change was presented by Public Works, and I just wanted to remove that portion out of our zoning ordinance.
This ties into that.
It does.
Decision, so it seems like.
Well, so to backtrack a little on what I was saying, the way we could make it work in this situation without changing our ordinance, we could enter into an agreement with them wherein they agree to provide the provisions that we otherwise would require by ordinance. And then based on the strength of that agreement, then we could, we could move forward with considering it and set the ordinance off for a future date.
Oh, someone can turn it down if they don't abide by the simple process we have for everybody else, correct? Turn down the acceptance of it.
Absolutely.
Like so.
So they don't want to abide by the processes we have in place for everybody else to become public roads, then.
Right, I, I don't think, I don't think they have any intentions not abiding by the, the rules set in place by our subdivision regulations. The issue that we run into is really the final plat process of which, you know, we've, we've reviewed and got all the bonds up to this point. And we've signed off on the final plat based on the land disturbance permit, and the final plat is signed off on by myself, the Public Works Director and the Chairman. And once we really do that, then we are not officially accepting it into the maintenance program, but we're accepting them as they're platted as public roads at that point. And what we don't want to do is we don't want to set that precedence moving forward without the board's decision to agree for them to be public roads ultimately in the long run.
I want us to be consistent with this stuff. I don't want to do one and then somebody else come up with something else.
So for right now, if they change it, it'll still be a privately maintained public road. Is that what, if it wouldn't go into the maintenance program? But how does that, how can you have a public road that's not in the maintenance program?
In, in that, to my understanding with, speaking with our council, is a large gray area, which we don't want to get into. We would rather see, we, you know, I've talked to our council multiple times on this issue. What we want to see is our, ultimately, our subdivision regulations updated to where these roads actually come before the board before we actually sign off on the final plat. And we will, we are working on that. It's just like council said, you know, do we want to do this before we get down the road and do that update?
So I'd say we, we have it come before us before y'all sign off on the final plat in this scenario and then work towards updating the subdivision.
Unless they're gonna do the final plat as a private road and then come to us later.
Yeah, because that, that doesn't preclude them from, if they go as they're going now, they can still ask for it to be turned over later, correct? As long as they build it up to standards?
We're, we're gonna require it to be built up to public standards, either whether it's either private or public.
Right, so what about the difference if they, if we don't change the way that it's platted now? That doesn't preclude them from coming a year from now and asking to.
I believe the issue is that it was brought up by the, by Sosby Creek and Sosby Point was the fact that the final plat makes a very large decision on the selling of the homes and that it affects that process whether or not it is considered, if it is platted as private or public, it hinders that portion of it. That's why they're asking at this.
People want it to be public.
Yeah.
So we'll have a cost to maintaining it, they don't want.
But if we don't have them, if we don't have a mechanism to, if we're gonna say that it will be, change the plat to where it's public and then something happens and we can't accept it, if they, if the standards are not met, then, you know, I feel like we're gonna be in a mess if they've sold it as a public. Straight, I don't think those things should be separate, and I don't know how legally that works, but it seems like to me that it should all go together. You wind up with a road that's supposed to be county maintained, but if it's not accepted in our maintenance program for X reason, then it's platted as a public road and we, it's a private road.
I think that's why you have the function of bonds in place in order to ensure that it is up to those standards. And if the developer doesn't perform, then you call the bonds and then you get it up.
Yeah, well, I think, well, I mean, we need to go through that process if they're gonna do it, like we, we don't need to skimp on anything, so we'll have to figure out a way to, for them to go through the process that we already have. I know it's a time issue, but maybe council can, like you said, come up with a, an agreement in the K, in this specific instance or something. If that's what they're looking to do, but I wouldn't want to give any special exceptions to any of the bonds or anything.
The only difference, the only difference from what I'm hearing is from any other zoning residential or whatever, those automatically are, they go through the same process where you sign off on the final plat and they're designed and the final plat is, is designed for public roads. Because that's part of the ordinance. We changed the ordinance for this one classification because of ambiguity. So the only difference is, is we're kind of in a little bit of a middle ground where you're asking for a sign-off on the final plat. I'd say the only step that we gotta take is bring it to us for our approval before y'all sign off on the final plat.
Are they, are they too late in the game to, can they bond it now? Can they get that inspected or engineered?
Absolutely, they can, they can bond it now.
And most bonds are a year to eighteen months, whether, whether you use a bond run.
It's.
Go ahead. Brad.
So pertaining, pertaining to these two developments individually, I've already received, it's gone through the entire process of them to become publicly maintained. I've already received all of the documents needed to move these projects forward as far as all their bonding. The twenty percent has broke out in our subdivision regulations of the developmental cost. So I've already received those from the two developers for these two projects.
Received the bond, or the affirmation of the bond.
Yeah.
How many months are they?
Eighteen months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Council?
I'm like Commissioner Gaines, I'd like to see it come for us, so.
Oh, yeah, well, it does, it has to.
Yeah.
Just a quick, so the, the bonds, are they paving bonds or maintenance bonds?
These, these are bindings that covers roads, curb, topping, the entire road development, storm. It pertains to all of that, it's twenty percent of that total development cost.
And subdivision bond and things.
And sorry, so it's to, it's to guarantee the completion of the road or the maintenance of the road?
That's, that's the cost to build the actual road itself, to install, install the storm, to install all that stuff. And what I get is twenty percent of that and I hold it until the project is completely finished, topped out, done. And then we'll do a pre-inspection, I'll go out and mark all the deficiencies, the developers will go out and fix all the deficiencies. And at that point, we'll start the bonding procedure from that date, and then eighteen months down the road is when we would normally bring it to the board for acceptance.
And who maintains it during that time?
So who maintains it during that time will be the developer. And at the end of the eighteen months, if deficiencies are found, I'll go back to the developer and say, hey, before I bring this to the board, you fix the deficiencies of the road, storm, ponds, whatever. And I think what Jameson and I think what people has kind of advised us to do is do all this on the front end. Let the board accept the roads on the front end, and that way it can just be the public director sign off on the backend after the eighteen months, and we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to bring this back to the board after the eighteen months.
So the, the bond, if, and the, at the end of eighteen months, if the developer for, you know, goes belly up or something happens, the bond will cover the repairs and we would make the repairs, but we would have to pay for it, correct?
Correct, the bond will cover it.
Okay, would, yeah, if you're, if you're comfortable with that, the timeline of that process, then that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, where's the work in the council, just kind of revise that stuff just so we can do it more on the front end? So we've been, we've been working to get this, a more streamlined approach to, to accepting these subjects.
These particular subdivisions are just coming through a little quicker than we had anticipated for us, or have our ordinances in place. And it's kind of unprecedented for them to already have platted as private and now they're, they're coming back and asking it's public. That's why we needed the direction board.
These two kind of got caught up in the hard exchange.
That's right.
So if they would have been applying now, they could have went through the process and they would have been platted as public, correct?
That's correct, they would have been platted as public, follow our standard procedure until now, we just kind of, we're gonna change our acceptance procedures.
Okay.
Other question?
Do, Jameson, do you, you have a sense, the, the sense that you need from the board that they're, they're accept, they find this acceptable, assuming that all these protections are followed through with? Is that the sense of the board?
Yeah.
You're asking them though, and I'm up here shaking my head.
I would assume at this point, what we would do is we would actually bring it before the board. Sounds like we need to bring the, the roads before the board to, for a vote to accept it, just like you, like you normally would before.
On the front end.
On the front.
On the front.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the attorney, I've been speaking to the attorney, obviously, so they're gonna be good with that and be able to provide us with the documentation needed. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have presentation of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Dawson County Proposed Healthcare Package, Human Resource Director Brad Gould and NFP Assistant Vice President Todd Hop, Brad.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's that time of year again to present the annual enrollment plan. We've been working very diligently with NFP, Vice President Todd Hooper, who's, his team has worked tirelessly as well. And we've got a pretty good plan that we put together. We've talked to a lot of carriers, gone back to a few of the carriers multiple, multiple times. And I think what we have here will, will please the board as well as our, serve our, our employees as well. And I'm gonna let Todd take the ball from here and present the plan and.
Thank you for allowing NFP to serve you and your employees. And as Brad mentioned, NFP has worked diligently this year with, with him and the entire benefit staff as well as the administration to try to put together a, a plan that was economically feasible at the same point in time. One that tried to maintain employee benefit plan designs without compromising value. And we've got a couple of changes here that you'll, you hear us talk about. And, and feel free to stop me throughout this and answer any questions. If you look to page two, one of the things we, you know, reflecting on, what's the past history been like? Is it all?
There we go. Thank you.
But in looking at the renewal history, we went back to twenty eighteen, you'll see the planned renewal year, the claims loss ratio for, for Dawson County at that time was eighty-three percent loss ratio. The renewal was two-point-nine percent, that's the initial renewal that we got from the carrier, and that was negotiated down to a one-point-three percent. Claims, as you will see, drive a lot of what we look at each year from the carriers. The twenty nineteen plan year, it was a hundred percent loss ratio. The initial renewal was sixteen-point-six percent, which we ended up and negotiated down to fourteen-point-six percent. And, and ended up being a five-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-six-dollar increase, twenty nineteen plan year. So what we ended up and looked at there, that was the year we looked at going to a fully insured plan with ACCG. And that came in at a four-point-three percent renewal with an increase of forty-seven thousand dollars. So saved the county considerable amount of money by leaving the carrier they were with and going to the ACCG anthem pool. As you know, with the pool, you basically, you pool your, your claims with theirs and you have some, some of the other counties that may run high, you may run low. And in that, there are advantages to, to this, to the county provided who runs well. The twenty-twenty plan year, the loss ratio was a hundred and four percent. The ACC block ratio was ninety-six-point-eight percent, which helped you because your claims were higher than that. So it gave you a blended renewal underwriting by being in the pool of ninety-five-point-eight percent. That initial renewal came in at thirty-five-and-a-half percent increase. NFP, in evaluating the renewal, identified that there were errors in the underwriting. The revised renewal, once we pointed that out to the pool, was twenty-point-three percent or a seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-dollar increase that was initially proposed. The revised renewal, once we pointed that out to the pool, was twenty point three percent or a seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar increase that was initially proposed. We negotiated a renewal of seventeen and a half percent. Also, we secured an additional two and a half percent discount there by packaging the dental, the basic life and voluntary life with Anthem. The overall renewal increase with no plan changes was going to be five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars last year. So again, I point out, you had a loss ratio, the last, those two plan years of a hundred percent and a hundred and four percent. Benefited from being in the pool with it. So for the current year that we're, we're just about to complete here, as of June the thirtieth, the current loss ratio for the, for the county is ninety percent. Considerable improvement there. The ACCG block loss ratio this year was ninety-eight point seven percent, which gave you a blended renewal of ninety-six point eight percent. So in this situation, you actually contributed to the pools, if you would call it success, if you want to call that. In the past, the pool has helped you. The initial renewal from Anthem this year was eighteen and a half percent. We negotiated that down to ten percent. We then went back and asked for additional concessions and that renewal came in at a final of seven percent. So ACCG anthem pool, the plan you have now, currently as it stands, would be a two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollar increase. So one of the things I wanted to point out before we, we go down to the Cigna proposal. So in taking a look at what happened with the pool this year, this was in every stretch of the imagination, a very unprecedented year. COVID cases did impact the ACCG pool significantly. Quite a few claims that they had was above a million dollars. Also, something that did impact the pool this year was cancer claims. Cancer claims are largely being driven now not by the procedural costs, but by the medications that are administered for cancer claims. That, they seen a fifty-eight percent increase just in the, the claims cost on kind of the, of cancer. And keep this in mind, it's one of the things we have to, in the industry, we started talking about. Is there were a lot of individuals that did not access medical care last year, especially the preventative care. So what we see is the potential for that influx of individuals to go and get their preventive care this year. And because they didn't get it last year, there were some things that probably was not detected early enough. That interventions could have been a stage one or stage two, when you're talking about cancer, that could be states three and four. So that's something that the industry is kind of bracing for is how will that affect claims going forward this year? Okay. I will tell you also, for you, you had three COVID cases this past year. And those, those cases, as far as high cost claims were totaled at four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to hit your claims, okay? Of that, there was twenty-one high cost claimants. Those are individuals with claims that go above twenty-five thousand dollars. Total high cost claims are a million four seventy-six. So you can see just those three COVID cases were almost thirty-one percent of your high cost claim. Barring that, your high cost claims this past year seem to be under control. Okay, I want to point that out. We also look from the standpoint of the drug spend. Your drug spend this year, a hundred and fifty-seven prescriptions drove fifty-six percent of your drug spend. Okay, so that's when we're talking about cancer. We talk about diabetics, we talk about rheumatoid arthritis, those types of things. Those types of drugs are very expensive, so we have to be mindful of that. The Cigna proposal, and again, let me point out, we got proposals also from United Healthcare and Humana. At the same point in time, we had a couple, one or two cares that did not respond. They were going to be, well, they were going to be uncompetitive, they stated. But the Cigna initial proposal was a nine and a half percent increase for this coming year, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars initially. So we went back and, and a couple of things that we wanted to do, if you recall when I started off, is we wanted to maintain the plan designs integrity. We did not want to change anything at all. That means deductibles, copays, those types of things. And as we went through that, we were able to, to maintain that for the most part. We did see an improvement in the Cigna proposal and I'll, and I'll go over that shortly. But the final negotiated renewal for Cigna by bundling dental and vision would be one point eight percent or a seventy-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollar increase. They provide a rate guarantee for year two, provided that claims meet certain criteria. And I've shared those with the administration. And you have that as a guarantee. Also, there is a offer from Cigna for a fifty percent dividend based on claim savings. So there's additional opportunities to save money depending on how well we manage claims. And obviously that ties into our wellness program. How well do we administer that? And then making sure that we get as much participation in a wellness program as we can. The additional items that we were able to get improved coverage on with your HMO this past year, if I recall correctly on that, you had your diabetic equipment supplies covered at a hundred percent. And then in your POS plan, they were covered in deductible co-insurance. With Cigna, all medical equipment and supplies in both plans would now be covered at a hundred percent. So not just diabetic supplies, but also both plans. Huge improvement. That, that was a big concession. I know from talk with the administration, there was some concern about that last year after the plan was implemented, so we was able to secure that. Want to say, you know, and we make a recommendation later in here, but ACCG and Anthem made some considerable concessions to get from eighteen and a half percent to seven. And I, and I remind you this, that wouldn't initially, with the pool running like it is, there's concern about who's going to be in the pool and who won't be in the pool next year. And with that being the case, we won't know the answer to that till I guess August, when we see who, who renewed with the pool. The one thing to think about with that, as people drop out of that pool, there's, they just didn't have a lot of money to put out there this year like they have in the past to negotiate down. So I just feel like it's important because the relationship you have had with them the last two years, your claims ran hot. For them to come to that point shows how well they want to earn your business. Okay. All right. So let's look at page four, and we get into the kind of the details. We, we've talked about overview of it. But when you look at page four, what we do here is if you look to the bottom left-hand corner down there, you'll see the participation by tier in your HMO plan and your point of service plan. You have a hundred and fifteen members in the HMO plan. You have, excuse me, a hundred and fifteen employees and you have a hundred and thirty-one employees in your POS plan. So what we show in the first two columns there is the current plan design and the current annual outlay for Anthem. Three point nine million, almost three, almost four million dollars, three million nine eighty. The Anthem renewal, again, initially was going to four million, seven sixteen, which is eighteen and a half percent increase. And it was like we discussed earlier, a seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar hit to the plan. After the final negotiations, and we got these honestly, I want to say by Monday, was when we finally got to this number. But your negotiated renewal with Anthem, you'll see us four million, two fifty-nine or a annual cost increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars, a seven percent increase. Again, you'll notice nothing changed in the plan. Any questions on, on that? Going to page five. What we do is we stack the Anthem negotiated renewal at seven percent against the Cigna proposal with the final one point eight percent increase. You'll notice where you see green is there is an improvement. The Cigna proposal, again, in order to get the one point eight percent, was packaged with dental and vision. And that was a one percent concession for putting dental and vision with the plan. And just as we do this year with Anthem plan, your, your dental and your vision is also included on the same card as your major medical, which is a convenience. Cigna would be doing the same thing by packaging this as well. Again, with the fifty percent dividend that you have out there, that's based on the premium, the actual premium paid less the claims and fix, some fixed costs they have there. But again, we, that again, just depends on how, how well we, I think, we do the wellness program. And then you'll see where it says DME, diabetic equipment and supplies. The hundred percent not only includes the diabetic equipment supplies coverage, but it also includes wheelchairs, crutches, those types of pieces of equipment too. And then one of the things to look at under the POS plan, you'll see, obviously with under HMO, there is no out of network benefits. But with the POS plan, you'll see the deductible for family would be moved from twenty-two thousand, five hundred down to twenty thousand. And then under co-insurance for out of network, instead of being fifty percent as it is currently with Anthem, it would be sixty percent. That's the way the two plans stack up. And as you can tell, there's about a two hundred and seven thousand dollar difference between those plans. And we work with administration and keeping in mind, I know some issues you had this past year, tried to minimize any kind of value change to the employee. And at the same point in time, we'll talk about that again. Basic life. I think something to point out here is currently it's with Anthem. And again, you'll see, we've got the comparison with standard. We had MetLife to give us a proposal. We had the incumbent or the previous incumbent Lincoln to give a proposal. And we've narrowed it down to between Anthem, because it's currently the one who you have it with. With standard proposed basic life, which is what you purchase on behalf of your employees. I want to point out in the green, you'll see a term there called portability. What that means is when your employees retire, some of them might not have any voluntary life at all. Basic may be all they have. Under the current plan, they would not be able to carry that with them when they quit or retire. But with the standard plan, they would be able to carry that with them. Okay? And then also you get a three-year rate guarantee. And it's, I think it's important to point out, especially in this day and time, a lot of times our public safety employees are not celebrated enough. You also get something here, if you'll notice at the very top called with line of duty benefit. What is line of duty benefit? That means an employee, rather than just having the standard fifty thousand of basic life, a public safety employee that should they be, become deceased in a line of duty, there would be an additional fifty thousand dollars of life insurance paid on their behalf. Okay. No cost at all on the, on the standard proposal compared to Anthem. We talked about how there was a one percent concession from Cigna included with their proposal, if dental and vision were packaged. Currently have Anthem. The Cigna proposal, again, you'll see a, a proposal here with frames. A lot of times that gets kind of pulled in as a, as a canned plan by a lot of folks to where they just give frames every two years. So we went and looked at what would the initial cost be if employees could get frames every twelve months? With that, again, you would see, we get a one-year rate guarantee. Employees would get their frames every twelve months. And the current cost now for an employee is five dollars and twelve cents. So basically for about forty-one more cents a month, you would see that turn, go to five fifty-three. So almost about, I think I figured it up, it was about four dollars and eighty cents a year. You get a hundred and thirty dollar values to get it every other year. We did look at Anthem for that. They, they got us a proposal yesterday and it was, it was considerably higher. So we didn't include that at this point because it, again, it would have been less competitive than, than what we got with Cigna here. I should point out too, you have sixty-nine percent participation in your vision plan, which is, is very good. Usually we see that in the mid fifties. And I think it shows that employees value their vision plan. Right, the dental plan. The Cigna dental plan, again, would be packaged with the medical. You see the improvements there. It's, it's a lot of semantics. It's like when you look at Anthem, you see you get two in twelve months. So what that means is they're, they're pretty specific about what twelve months means versus two per calendar year. You don't necessarily have them, a calendar year could be a rolling year. Also, crown frequency, one in seven years currently would go to one in five years. Hopefully the crown lasts longer than five or seven years anyway, but that is an improvement there. You get a one-year rate guarantee. I want to say here is about a, almost a two percent decrease. So employees that are currently paying twenty-eight oh one would go down to twenty-seven fifty-three. You would see family coverage go down from ninety-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents a month to ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents a month. So some good news there. And I should point out, you have seventy-six percent participation in your dental plan. Again, that's normally we see in the low sixties on dental plan. So again, I think it communicates there's some value in your dental plans that you have there. All right, let's talk about page nine, it's comprehensive wellness. Wellness is, is a big subject and you get arguments for it and against it all across the board. It just depends on, on who you're talking to. NFP is a, has a strong, is a strong proponent of wellness. At the same point in time, a lot of times, we don't have control over premiums, but what we do have control over is claims a lot of times, whether it be our lifestyle behaviors, implementing a wellness program that addresses those, monitors them, assist employees in coaching and try to improve, improve the employees' health. So when we looked at ACCG Anthem and we looked at Cigna, we evaluated the wellness programs and the funds that they can provide. And keep in mind, again, as we talk about claims, and you've heard me say this over and over, we, we've got to focus on, on the claims and how we help our employees. We just simply have to do that. Initially Anthem ACCG did not have any wellness funds in place. They did have their standard program. And I, I know the county is familiar with this, where they offer up to seven hundred dollars per employee for wellness incentives, depending on if you participate in a questionnaire. Let's see, biometrics and those types of things. And you heard me say earlier that they had came to the table to come off of eighteen and a half to seven percent. I want to say this was either Friday night or Monday night, but I'm pretty sure it was Monday. They came to the table and Anthem and ACCG together offered to provide wellness funds. ACCG is offering three thousand dollars to contribute to that. And then Anthem would be offering fifteen thousand to give you a total of eighteen thousand dollars to, for the administration to work with their, their current wellness program. And they offer again, the, the regular program that they have in place for employees that voluntarily complete the assessments. Cigna is offering twenty thousand dollars in wellness funds. And in addition to that, they have a program, they have a consultant that would work with your administration or your benefits administration, along with our wellness director Ebony Marbury to help implement the motivate me program. It's an incentive program that ties into gift cards. And based upon how the county designs that wellness program, employees can earn those gift cards throughout the year. By having your dental and your vision tied to your medical, whenever someone has their preventive care visit, it automatically updates through the motivate me to notify them that that individual has met that piece of criteria to earn whatever dollar amount has, has been predetermined for that. You may give dollars as well for your preventative care, for your two-year, times a year cleanings. Those again, would be automatically updated into that program. In addition, they have a diabetes program. It's a sixteen weeks diabetes program. Everyone doesn't qualify for that. But a large focus of that diabetes program includes virtual health coaching. But it focuses on, on weight loss, because a lot of times that's the preliminary issue that they want to see someone do is manage their, their body, the BMI or the body mass index. Either one of these programs, again, we feel would be successful with your administration and what they already have in place. You have a wellness with your administration and what they already have in place. You have a wellness program in place that seems to operate pretty well. The wellness director that we have Ebony Marbury again would would work with you all to facilitate these offerings throughout the year. But again, you know, something to think about is if you do take the Cigna recommendation, they do have a rate guarantee. Humana provided a rate guarantee for year two. Cigna provided a rate guarantee for year two also. So you know in advance, based upon where your claims are at, that your renewal should not go above a certain percentage. Okay? I want to share that with you. I know the question comes up as we look at eighteen and a half and we look at nine and a half this year, what would it have been? The rate guarantee, and again, is driven by your claims. And I'm just going to get a few high points. Keep in mind, your losses this year were ninety percent standing alone by themselves per hour measurements. If your claims were not to exceed seventy-six percent, your initial renewal next year would not go above three point one percent. At eighty percent, it would not exceed five percent. At ninety percent, your claims would not exceed nine point nine percent. And then if your claims were at a hundred percent, they would not exceed fourteen point seven percent. So I just point that out to give you some type of some type of medium to measure where you were this year, what it could have been, and then what it could be next year.
Can I ask you a quick question? Sorry to interject. The if we back out the COVID claims, you said was four hundred and some odd thousand. We backed that east out because that was kind of a it's kind of an outlier for previous year. What would our loss ratio have been back in that component out or those claims out?
Back out four hundred.
I don't know what you said our total number was or I didn't.
Yeah, hold on. Your total. I give you. He's about a million four fifty.
Ninety percent would be ninety percent of the three point nine million plan cost overall, correct?
Ninety percent of what now?
We're running a ninety percent loss ratios. Loss ratios losses over what your premium is. So it'd be ninety percent of what our premium costs.
Yes.
And then you back out.
Yeah, you look at roughly your annual medical or its claims. Or I'm going to use twenty twenty. And that's only a partial year that we've got. That was two million, three forty-four.
Four hundred thousand, four million would be ten percent.
So we'd be eighty percent then roughly. We'd have an eighty percent if you back out those COVID claims.
The slide that we have there on ten, as we worked with administration, there was a question that looked and said, okay. Given the fact we kept the plan design in check. And we've got an increase of two hundred and seventy, I want to say eight thousand dollars from Anthem. We got a seventy-one thousand dollar increase from Cigna. What would that look like as far as the board shares concerned? If we did not pass any of that on to the employee? So what you see there on page ten just summarizes that when you when you focus on the employee share and the employer share. So I'll start with that first section. You'll see Anthem current. I'm not going to try to get into the weeds with these. But again, if you focus on the annual amount there, you'll see where the employer share right now for an employee only coverage under the HMO would be like sixty-two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Under the Anthem proposal, the increase would go to sixty-eight hundred and twenty dollars. So five hundred and seventy dollars a year. And if you look at the Cigna proposal, it would go from sixty-two hundred and fifty-five dollars for the employer share to sixty-four hundred and fifty-nine dollars a share. Or roughly a two hundred and five dollar increase. So I won't go through all of those. You can you can see how those two plans compare from a standpoint of which one impacts the the board the most if you decided to shoulder those increases yourself. And also you'll see over there what the employee per pay period is now. And that stays consistent. But again, that was management had asked us to take a look at that before we went forward. Recommendations. This page just summarizes up everything we've discussed. At this point, you'll see there's a one percent discount off medical if dental life. It's not voluntary life, dental dental and vision is what that should say. I apologize for that. But if Dylan Vision or package with Cigna is a one percent discount, that's already built into the one point eight percent that you seen. The dental Cigna annually for all employees, not each individual employee, but as an aggregate was a twenty-six hundred and forty-five dollar a year decrease. Roughly one point eight percent or one percent. The vision Cigna would be again, a seventeen hundred and seventy-two dollar increase there. So there's an offset. At the same point in time, you'll also see with the basic life, a three-year rate guarantee, line of duty benefit for public safety and no increase. Voluntary life with standard would be a three-year rate guarantee. You gain portability for employees to carry that with them when they either retire or leave the employment. No annual increase. Also, I should point out with the voluntary life currently, you have a hundred thousand dollar guaranteed issue. No questions asked. That would remain the same with the standard. But also you're limited to insurance coverage of only five times your salary. So someone right now making twenty-five thousand dollars a year would not be able to get more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand. With standard, there is no salary limitation. So if they wanted two hundred thousand, they could get it. Now, obviously above the guarantee issue, they would have to have evidence of insurability for that. So we felt like that was an improvement. And you can increase it. If you had twenty thousand this year and you wanted to add ten thousand next year, you could do that without evidence of insurability. With Anthem, you have to answer that every single year. So again, it allows someone to to add more to that answering those questions. Your short-term disability, again, with standard, you have a three-year rate guarantee. You have fifty-one percent of your employees that participate in short-term disability. And depending on the way that's priced, it goes basically in five-year age bands. So some of that you may see an increase or no increase. On short-term disability, there were no increases between the age bands. Your long-term disability, again, we recommend standard, a three-year rate guarantee. Again, it's blended due to age bands. You do have various any, I mean, anywhere from ten to up to above fifty percent on that. You have fifty-two percent participation. But again, with keeping in mind fifty-one to fifty-two percent participation, we looked at that where most employees are going to have or a lot of employees would have both. And when you take the short-term disability is flat, no increase, and the long term goes up. You see about a ten percent increase for those employees who have that, depending on which age band you're in. Next thing is some good news. Flex Care Digital is who you provide your or you use to provide telemedicine for all of your employees, including part-time. You currently pay twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. You would get a thirty-three percent decrease or savings of sixty-nine hundred and twelve dollars this year. It would go down to thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. The answer behind why that changes is Teledoc is the current medical provider behind the scenes, if you will. They would be changing their medical provider to Cirrus MD and be able to achieve those savings. There would be new cards issued as well in regard to this. Last item of ancillary, currently you have forty-four employees that participate in the flexible spending account. That cost is currently four dollars and twenty-five cents. That would go down to three dollars and seventy-five cents. We would be looking at moving from task to a company called Navia. The overall savings on that's two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year, some fairly minimal. And then a final statement is purely based on the cost savings to the county and the added additional benefits to the employees for the medical equipment and then looking at out of out of network going from fifty percent to sixty percent based on a savings of two hundred thousand dollars roughly between Anthem and Cigna, we would recommend the Cigna proposal this year. Again, that's purely based on cost. I realize with ACCG Anthem, you definitely have a a relationship that you look at and you place a value on that and we recognize that that can be a part of your consideration too. Questions?
So you're saying that this the Cigna plan is not through the ACCG pool?
It would not be through the ACCG pool and you bring it up. I I didn't fail to mention this. But currently, most of your carriers are going to get you a renewal ninety days out. And I know for you all and everybody else that we service the county, that is a pressure point. Because by the time the pool gets that and we receive it is tipped around August the fifth, I mean, April the fifteenth or sixteenth. Fifteen fifteen valuable days. With the Cigna proposal, they guarantee that you would get that on on basically April the first ninety days out. So that does give us back off of a lot of pressure for for looking at the renewal.
This may be something that maybe you may not know or be hard to tell, but between the two plans, as far as the facilities and the doctors that are in network, are they pretty comparable?
That they are. And we shared that with administration because one of the things that we do look at, and we don't want you just to focus on premium. But we look at what we call disruption. We do that with your dental, your vision, and then like you said, your medical. And in that, we pull the claims from last year and we look at all the providers. Northside Hospital is is your largest one. Okay? And that being said, when we compared Cigna with them, it matched up perfectly on that. Obviously, you have to keep your eye on. We're seeing it with Anthem in the past. It's going on with United Healthcare right now with Northside in a limited way. I think it's to Luther and Lawrenceville facilities. We look at that to make sure that we understand if there's any disruption going to happen there. So yes, we do look at that. Good point.
That did y'all run analysis for the zip codes for where our people live?
We do have one.
With regards to network access?
Yes, we we do have one in which matter of fact, I don't mind sharing with you. We have that particular analysis that I can share with you if you want to take a look at that, just so you have a better feel for where your claims are at and who's servicing those.
But it aligns with where our employees live.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it should because again, when we match up with the facilities, what they'll do is a lot of times they they don't just use the address. They'll use a TIN number and just make sure that that they cross-reference those so that we're looking at those.
And if you get out of the pool, you gotta stay out two years. And they guarantees the rate, the percentages for how many three years?
Doesn't sound like the pool will be around in two years. Doesn't sound like the pool might not be around.
I just say though, if they came back to us at a fifty percent increase, you know, we could get back in the boat if we had to.
Yeah.
We've done that before. We've got out and got back in the process, went up several years ago.
And and the point you point you make is a very valid point because you're not the only ones that take that into consideration when we look at some of our other clients that have been in the pool quite a while, just as you looked at or we we pointed out there, you had a eighty percent one year. Then you get in the food and you have a I think it's a hundred and then a hundred and three maybe. They carry you sometimes, you carry them to 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 address his, what he stated is, and I've shared with administration, we just don't know what the post going to look like probably until August. And nobody can look into the glass ball, but at least the one thing I looked at when we talked about those rate guarantees. If you'd had a ninety percent this year, you wouldn't have went above fourteen and a half with that rate guarantee. And I'll tell you, when we looked at Humana's contract and they had a rate guarantee, it's almost like everybody knows their numbers. They're almost stacked up line by line. And one of the things that happens too, we look at medical trend. Your claims can stay the same this year, the dollar amount, but you got to consider what does the medical cost inflation look like, especially drugs? For us outside, that's about a six to eight percent number. I know just the documentation we did get from ACCG, their trend that they use is about twelve. I don't think that's inflated. I think that that is identifying the fact that they look at the zip codes, like you said, can speak difference to South Georgia and North Georgia. And then they look at the A, the peer age group, you know, what is age group of employees across the pool and they tend to work longer. A lot of times they don't retire early enough so they can have an impact on the pool, I think, versus a just a standard book of business from any carrier. I'll present that any other.
There's a question deductible years. So we're mid-year, we're mid-year term. Do these both fall on plan years for deductibles or do they fall on calendar years?
Your your deductible is going to be the same with this plan as it would be with your.
I understand that, but as far as like if somebody's already incurred costs under Anthem in this first six months of this calendar year, does that carry over to a new carrier within the the rest of the fiscal year? Are they both the same on the same years?
Yes, okay, yes, they would be. And and we, matter of fact, I addressed that question on the way up here. And what will happen is if you did change from Anthem over to Cigna, they would take the runout claims and those runout claims, let's just say that goes through August the first. Those claims are provided to a new carrier. They import those in and implement them. And then for some of those employees that we may have a concern about that would, let's just say they've already met that deductible. We can take an EOB from them and then the new carrier would actually just go ahead and and put that in place.
So they'd be credited for any.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think to Tim's point, a couple of years ago, this this board and and administration really started taking, and I think it was driven some by the conversation that you guys brought to the table that in healthcare, we got to take a proactive approach to mitigating our losses on the front end with the wellness plans and and our staff has done a good job trying to implement that on a bigger level. Last year, I think we even made an additional contribution above what was given to us through the plan thing. And I think it's reflected in our in a kind of go back and that's why I take out the COVID thing because that was an outlier. So our trend wise, if we continue on the trend that we're going in the proactive approaches, you never know what's going to happen. But statistically, if you try to mitigate it, then then we should outperform the pool essentially in be in a better position than than, you know, being in the pool.
I thought we showed that. We showed that.
Yeah.
This part of this year.
Yes.
Yeah, we're showing that.
And I think to keep in mind what the pool does, if a claim hits a hundred thousand, they've got reinsurance that covers that. So for those types, they pull that out of your experience because they're getting that money back so that doesn't penalize you. Carriers will do the same thing on that. Because they've got the insurance out there as well. But managing those claims is is very key. As I've mentioned with administration, a premature newborn, you don't have a lot of control over that. COVID, you don't have a lot of control. When we do dive into your claims, we looked at the lifestyle factors, you will find that the top three or four are obesity related. That can drive diabetes, of course, heart conditions. And then putting a wellness plan in place. You you never want to say you got to you lose X pounds. You just want someone to have someone to coach them, encourage them and monitor it. And tobacco cessation, those types of programs. We know how to manage those and from a compliance standpoint, make sure that that you're that you're compliant. Other questions?
My final one, and I talk too much and I know this board says that, but in my world of insurance, people look at, let's just say homeowner's interest. They look at what's the limit for the dwelling and then what's the premium? What they miss is the 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 stuff in between. What's the contract look like? So explain the difference in the actual contracts between Anthem and the contracts that Cigna has from a broadening standpoint. Is Anthem more broad? From a claims handling standpoint, you know, that's where the rubber meets the road is when our employees have an issue. We might have the exact same plan on paper. But when it comes to claims handling, from your experience, what's the difference between the two companies and what they are?
Well, here's one of the things. Anthem typically has better reporting from a standpoint of what we we deal with with Cigna and United Healthcare is based on your size. One of the things that we did in the contract and you have to ask for this upfront or you don't get it was we will get our monthly reporting like we typically get from Anthem. Typically, when you're under five hundred lives, they don't do that. It's going to be quarterly. So that yeah, Anthem, what they they were doing a paid claims, which is just like that. So there was about a three, three-month lag last year. They had something called incurred claims, which we were basically all kind of, not just you all, but everybody was kind of swimming blind for about three months till they got that caught up. So again, from a standpoint of of managing the claims and that reporting is so critical because what we share with administration is usually we show here's where you're at this month with high cost claimants. Here's the conditions. We don't say who they are, but we say here's the conditions. Well, that drives, are you focused on the right things in your wellness program? Then we see those medications. Those medications drive us to look at the formulary. So when we look at the formulary, whether a medication is administered in office or in a home setting now, we're looking at those types of things as well whenever you're trying to manage those costs because a lot of carriers now are pushing for those types of medications to be delivered in home because there's a tremendous savings versus in in a office setting. So that would be a part of what we do and that's gonna be part of what Anthem does as well, too. They're just trying to manage claims on that basis. And then again, the one other thing that would differ really from contractual standpoint, the significant that that you don't have in the Anthem contract is that dividend policy. So again, by managing those dividend, by managing those claims, looking at those reports, because we know throughout the year before we get there, where are we going to be before we get to this time of the year? And develop an expectation of what type of dividend that you would get back. So let's just say the question came up, well, what if we don't, you know, what if we don't want to stay with them? Well, it's probably because your claims are bad and you got a better, better rate from a different carrier the following year. Well, you're not gonna have a dividend. And in order to get that dividend, you would need to stay with Cigna the following year, okay? Be be clear about that. But you're not going to stay with them anymore.
Everything but claims handling from an employee's perspective, the difference, is there a difference from what you've experienced with other clients that have had challenges with one or the other? So when a when a employee goes to file claims, kicking back claims from one or the other for whatever reason or is there a different experience level between the two carriers?
No, and and keep in mind, we have our own call center, which we also with our account manager, we have a direct representative with with each carrier. So we're gonna handle that the same way with one carrier versus the other. I do know from my own experience from the pharmacy piece, they have some kind of bin number. And if a carrier changes bin numbers, you could go to your pharmacy today and then go tomorrow and they could say it's not covered. I have ran into that before and you typically don't have that deep connection to the pharmacy side with the carrier, but we have seen that with Cigna before, not taking anything away from it. But for us, I think last year we was May twenty fifth or sixth when we were here and this is good to be here earlier. At the same point in time, we would hope that you could vote on the recommendations so that we can begin to build your your enrollment site out and be prepared to meet the deadline so that they can get their payroll ran appropriately. I just, again, appreciate y'all putting your trust in NFP to handle your employee benefits.
Most of the claims, are they from the employees or from the spouses? Is that information that you have?
It it is. I don't have that write off, but I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I can do right away here in that respect.
I think three of the highest claims we discussed before.
We do.
So three highest things after they took out.
Yeah, I know some some counties are, you know, if the spouse is working for an employer that can provide them health insurance, they are requiring the spouse to go with that. You know, kind of splitting the employee in this class, so.
I can tell you twenty one of your high cost claims, ten of those were employees.
I was, please say that again.
Out of your twenty one high cost claimants, ten of those were employees. And and to that, and we we get that question sometimes, should we surcharge for spouses? Should we remove them? We handle that very delicately and before you would make a determination just arbitrarily, we can look into that because what you'll find sometimes is the additional premium with family on there or employee spouse. It actually subsidizes the claims because your spouse claims are less than the premium, the additional premiums that they generate. So that's an educated, that's an educated recommendation that we would have to make to you that to make sure you wouldn't harm in your plan in terms of.
Anything in here about tobacco use?
There's not a part of any of the wellness programs can address that.
Okay.
I think education is a big part of that. I don't mind sharing with you, the state has a tobacco surcharge. And I say tobacco, not smoking, but tobacco surcharge is like forty dollars a pay or eighty dollars a month. But the important thing to keep in mind with that is they know that about two percent of the people who participate in the cessation program will probably quit. But a big part of what the Affordable Care Act done, it put in place that if a person completes a cessation, they don't have to stop using tobacco, but they complete it. Then they are, they're they're not included or have to be included for a tobacco surcharge. And if they've paid a surcharge through the year, they get that refunded back to them. So that's a big incentive. But so many people think you have to stop and I think that prevents them from participating, but.
So you can just do a program and then still keep dipping or chewing or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, the way that would work is let's just say, let's just say you're on a calendar year and went through January, February, March, April. Let's say you went through four months and it was a fifty dollar surcharge, two hundred dollars, you've already had taken out of your check. You have a certificate and you can put that in your wellness program. That's provided to your benefits department to show. They get their two hundred dollars back and they also avoid this surcharge going forward. The idea is to hopefully reach some people that would stop using tobacco.
Two percent statistically, but.
That's what the state uses on their plan or on their numbers. They say that statistically, two percent of the people who actually participate in cessation programs will quit each year.
Is there anything in here in New York on the prescription program where the doctor needs to prescribe the old tried and true, true, true medicines, cheap, less expensive medicines. You know, sometimes they prescribe the hottest thing out.
Yes.
And it's the most expensive thing out. So is there any provisions like that that, you know, the doctor says, well, let's try you on this. It's been around for years and it doesn't really cost much.
There's nothing in there that would direct the physician to do that. It's just, you know, you're focusing on the personal healthcare. But in all due respect, we, you know, we find out that a lot, you know, physicians have those reps in their office all the time.
Oh, yes.
You know, they're making a recommendation and it's shocking to them a lot of times when they find out why I didn't know your insurance didn't cover this. Or the cost was fairly exorbitant. And we looked at your top ten drugs that you, especially in your high cost claimants. If you don't mind, I'll just tell you a couple of those real quick. You have Stelara, which is for psoriasis, Crohn's, Jakafi, which is for a blood cancer. You do have one of those types of claims out there. Trimpio, psoriasis, Hemira, Crohn's, arthritis, Ozempic, diabetes, touts, autoimmune, Jordians diabetes, and then one is called Lamictal. It's an anticonvulsant. Out of your top ten, when we looked at the at the formulary, because we did look at that with Cigna, that's the only one that was called non-formulary. So that is we would, you know, the carrier would need to identify who that is. And then what we do is we work with them either for a go ahead and get a preauthorization for an addition, say eight or nine month supply that gets them over and then the new carrier recognizes that or get a letter from their physician, because a lot of times they're in step therapies and you don't want them to have to start over on that.
Right.
Big piece of that. But most of those I just mentioned to you, they require prior authorization and then they have a quantity limit on those. But those are what's, when you heard me talk about five hundred and something thousand dollars as well for your of the million for this drugs, that's where they're at right there. And it gives you an idea the underlying types of diseases that are out there. Some of those, you just can't, you can't change that with wellness.
Have you heard of a, an app or a company called Right Way that is a consultant firm with an app that helps employees navigate the plans that they have and if they have questions, then they can go directly to this service. Have you heard of something like that?
I have. There there's a couple out there. The one that NFP has been looking at and actually has created partnership with, it's called Naya, N A Y A. But what it does, it takes your plan, it takes the network, it takes the pharmacy, and then it builds it into that app so that your employees have a more personalized experience like you're talking about. But yes, we do see that it helps them understand the benefits. And I believe they also incorporate into that based on the claims they've submitted, where they are at with the deductible, out of pocket maximums, too.
I've heard that that organizations that use something like that are able to keep costs down even further and it and it's a huge benefit to the employee because it's it's health insurance is a, it's it's like playing Russian roulette. You never know what you're gonna get. I mean, it's just complete ambiguity here and there. And for a employee to be able to pick up the phone and call a dedicated person that can walk them through. I think there's a lot of validity and a lot of value in that. So is it something that you can give us a price on through you guys?
It is, and I'll tell you here, I'll just be completely transparent. The price on say like Naya is about fifteen to seventeen dollars per employee per month. But there are carriers out there. And we never really let carriers drive us with incentives to choose a carrier for something like that, but there are carriers out there that will contribute to the cost of that because obviously keeps their claims down.
Yeah.
So you're exact, we can work on that.
I think Right Way, from the people I've talked to, is about five, five fifty per employee per month, but they've seen an ROI on that, that is multiples just for keeping claims cost down. And it's something that the carriers really like to see because it's a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach. And employees absolutely love it.
It is, and in that kind of technology, you actually have the ability, for lack of a better term, cost coverage. You have the ability, it could be through your wellness program, instead of giving gift cards, you could put money in an HRA that they earn and based upon, I could pull it up and say, I want to have a colonoscopy this month. And based through that, through Centers of Excellence, I can, it'll say, hey, if you go to Dr. Hooper, we're gonna give you a hundred dollars. If you go to Dr. Smith, we're gonna give you fifty. Well, why is that? Because they may be charging different, one might charge you fifteen hundred dollars, one might charge you seven hundred dollars. So the client, so what does encourages your employees to shop to get those dollars? And then they're going to an individual who has been deemed to be have less tests that they ask for and it don't drive claims in your in your program. So it's pretty, pretty neat, but it does help the employee because it's most people are just throwing a dart and they're going.
Yeah, and when you get a bill in the mail, you don't know where you should pay it or not pay it. And my understanding is you call that company and they and that may be just one of multiple that we can look at, but.
Yes, advocacy.
I've heard it's really good help for employees and cost.
And a lot of times, if you have an out of network situation, those those same companies will intervene on your part because they're used to negotiating those types. So, yeah, we we'll be glad to work with teams with something like that.
Cool, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of first quarter two thousand twenty one financial report, Chief Financial Officer, Vicky Knicker. Vicky.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. It's hard to believe that we are already in May and it's time to give you the first quarter report. This year is just flying by. The main focus of this report will be on general fund because that is our main operating fund for the county. The benchmark number you want to look at for the first quarter is twenty five percent. So that's kind of what we look at at first quarter. The original FY twenty one budget was thirty point seven million. Currently, as of the end of March, we're at thirty one point two. The revenue total year to date, we're at five point eight million or eighteen point eight percent of what was budgeted and the expenditures are at six point four million or twenty point five nine percent. Break even time doesn't normally happen till after the third quarter. And that's one of the reasons why it's important to have a good, a good strong fund balance because really, you're you're living on that until your tax money comes in at the end of the year. I like to look at last year compared to this year. And last year's budget was twenty nine point nine originally. And at this time last year, it was amended up to thirty point nine million. Year to date, actual, I thought it was interesting that last year's expenditures to date were higher than than this year. And that's even with COVID going on, but it's pretty comparable, but it's about three percent higher than it was last year. And now we'll look at the revenues in detail a little bit. These are the the revenue categories for general fund. You have taxes, local option, sales tax, licenses and permits, charges for services, intergovernmental revenues, fines and forfeitures, investment income, donations, miscellaneous and other financing sources. As I said earlier, we're at five point eight million. The first quarter, it always looks a little I guess, slow or low, you want to say, because so much of what we get in January, because we use modified accrual, it gets accrued back to the prior year. So it's it's always playing catch up a little bit, but you know, like I said, we normally catch up somewhere in the third quarter. Local option sales tax, you know, during COVID, everyone was really concerned about what was gonna happen. And I have to say, I am just truly amazed. This this chart shows the difference between this year and last year. In January of this year, we collected six hundred and ninety three thousand. In twenty twenty, we're at five hundred and eighty five thousand or eighteen percent more. In February, we were at six hundred and fifty nine thousand and that's comparison to five hundred and thirty five thousand or twenty three percent higher. So year to date, we're at twenty point seven percent higher or two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars.
Are you sure this is right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You not got anything?
No, 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 this is, it's right. Okay, next we'll look at the general government expenditures. And all of our departments in general fund, they're they're categorized based on what the Government Accounting Standards Board say, how we have to categorize them. So this first group is general government. And the departments that are in general government are Board of Commissioners, County Administration, Elections, General Government, Finance, Information Technology, Human Resources, Tax Commissioner, Tax Assessor, Board of Equalization, Risk Management, Facilities and Public Relations. These departments all total, their budget is a little over six million dollars. Year to date, we're at one point four million or twenty three percent of budget. And like I said, you want to, you want to be at twenty five or less at the end of first quarter if possible. Next, we'll look at the judicial expenditures. And those departments that make that up are Superior Court, Clerk of Court, District Attorney, Magistrate Court, Probate Court, Juvenile Court and Public Defender. And these departments all total up to three point five million. And their year to date through March expenditures are six hundred and eighty seven thousand and they're at nineteen point five percent. Next is Sheriff's expenditures and he has several departments that he, you know, categorizes his operations. You have the sheriff and the sheriff department, that includes administration, patrol and CID. So there's there's really three, three categories that are within that one department. Then we have Sheriff K nine, the jail, school traffic management, school resource officers, donations, court services and special event officers. And all of his general, he also has nine one one, but that's in a separate fund. But all his general fund budgets total eight point four million and year to date, he's at one point eight million or twenty one point six percent of budget. The other public safety departments are marshals, fire, the fire marshal. The other public safety departments are Marshals, Fire, the Fire Marshal, EMS, Coroner, EMA and the Humane Society. And these departments total five-point-eight million. And year-to-date through March, they're a little over one million or eighteen-point-eight percent. Public Works has two departments in general fund. They total one-point-nine million. Year-to-date through March, they're at three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand or nineteen-point-four percent of budget. If you have any questions about any of these, just let me know. Health and welfare, there are several departments that make up that category. You have the Health Department, Good Shepherd Clinic, CASA, DFAX, Avita, No One Alone, Indigent Welfare, Senior Center, Senior Services Donations and the Silver Sneakers. And these departments, their budget totals four-hundred-and-three-thousand. Year-to-date, they're a little over seventy-eight-thousand or nineteen-point-three percent of budget. Recreation and Culture, that includes all the park departments, you have your park, park donations, the Women's Club, the pool, War Hill Park and then the library. These departments total one-point-seven million. Year-to-date expenditures are three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand or twenty-one percent of budget. Housing Development is made up of the County Extension Office, Planning and Development and the Development Authority. Their budgets total nine-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. Year-to-date expenditures are at two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand or twenty-four-point-four percent of budget. Other financing uses, we have several, I guess, other operations that are funded by general fund. We have the Family Connection, our grants, transfer out to capital, transfer out to fleet, transfer out to nine-one-one, and then the transfer out for D Card GIS. These other financing uses total two-point-two million. Year-to-date, we're at three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand or fourteen percent of budget. And this just shows all of those categories totaled together. And like I said earlier, year-to-date, general fund, we're at six-point-four million or twenty percent of the budget. Investment employees, I always like to see, you know, where the money is kind of split in in total by other categories. And so salary and benefits, we budgeted twenty-point-one million dollars this year for salary and benefits in general fund. Year-to-date, we're over four million or, and that makes up sixty-two percent of the of the total expenses that have been expended this year. So almost sixty-three cents of every dollar out of general fund has gone towards employees. Okay, we had, we had a few, we had a few additions to general fund. We did a hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars for the emergency sewer repair at Fire Station Two. Twenty-four, I'm sorry, ninety-four-thousand-five-hundred dollars towards the comprehensive security system upgrade. And then fifty-three-thousand for the carryover for the ACCG Risk Management Funds. Fund balance in general fund, you know, as you know, we're in the middle of trying to finish up the audit. And we won't know for sure where we're gonna be until they give me final numbers. But right now, it's looking like unassigned fund balance will be approximately seven million. And that is twenty-two percent of budgeted expenditures. We have other funds that we maintain other than general fund, and these are probably the largest ones of of those. We have nine-one-one, Family Connection, the Grants Fund, Hotel Motel, Capital Projects, Solid Waste Fund and Impact Fees. It's amazing, our impact fees, we budgeted eight-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, we've already collected eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand in revenues. Grants Fund, we budgeted three million and we received four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand in revenue and spent six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand. Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax or SPOST. This kind of compares it the same way as I did for local option sales tax. The SPOST is separate, it does not go into the general fund, it's a separate fund, is to be only used for capital projects. This year's receipt for January was seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand or fourteen, I'm sorry, nineteen percent higher than last year's. And the February receipt was seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, up twenty-three percent from same month last year at six-hundred-and-seven-thousand. The year-to-date change is twenty-one-point-two-eight percent or two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars. And the City of Dawsonville receives fifteen percent of each month's receipt. Excuse me, SPOST six year-to-date expenditures. We've got nine-point-two million that we budgeted right now for SPOST six. And we have spent six-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, but we have two-point-one million in convert. The largest in convert is for roads because we're just now getting into the, you know, the road season. Like I said earlier, impact fees, impact fees were reinstated in two thousand and eighteen. And since that time, over two-point-eight million dollars has been collected. Impact fees can only be used for capital improvement related to the growth in the county. It's not, it cannot be used for salaries or other regular maintenance repairs and operations. Departments that are authorized use of these funds are the library, parks, fire and roads. And so far, the uses of impact fees, we spent a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars that went towards a fire truck. We've spent six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand on park expansion and almost twenty thousand for the library. In the first quarter, we had some notable purchases in projects that that happened. I guess the biggest was the implementation of the salary study changes that happened in January. Purchase of a new K-9 trailer for the sheriff. We have ordered several vehicles for the sheriff and other departments. There is a delay for anybody that's trying to order cars or appliances or anything, so they're all kind of on hold. Completion of Fire Station Eight. Continuation of construction of the berm at Rock Creek. Repair the sewer at Fire Station Two. Creation of the specifications for the comprehensive security upgrade, system upgrade. Preparation of audiovisual upgrade in courtrooms A, B and D. Ongoing construction of the Harry Soesby Roundabout and design for the Dawson Forest Highway Fifty-three Roundabout and Shoal Creek Road and State Route One Thirty-Six intersection. What I'd like to say is in spite of COVID-nineteen, it looks like Dawson County appears to be on track to have a financially successful two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to thank all the elected officials and the department heads and their staff members for their good fiscal management cooperation. I'd also like to thank my staff. I have such a great staff. They do a great job and I'm very proud to be here representing them today. So if you have any questions.
Questions for Vicki?
To answer.
I don't have a question, but I do want to say thank you to you and your staff for an outstanding job. And David, to the, all the other department heads that you manage as well, for the outstanding job that they're doing as well in managing their budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
County Manager Report, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Atlanta Gas had a red, uh, gas had Red Ryder Road and Lumpkin Campground Road closed today. And we'll have it closed from nine AM to four PM tomorrow, May the seventh, for a gas main tie-in in the middle of Red Ryder Road. There is signage and traffic control for the areas of Lumpkin Campground Road and Red Ryder Road at Freeland. At this point, I haven't received any issues as far as any traffic issues or citizen complaints or anything. So just wanted to bring out to everybody's awareness there. After twenty-three years of service to Dawson County, Ann Martin is retiring from the Dawson County Sheriff's Office tomorrow, May seventh. So we wish her a happy and much deserved retirement. So if you could stop by and say goodbye, it'll be tomorrow. A reminder that the Georgia Forestry has enforced the summertime burning restrictions. No open burning is allowed until September the thirtieth. However, there are some exceptions to the burn ban for questions to, or to obtain a burn permit, folks can contact the Georgia Forestry. The Good Shepherd Clinic is providing free COVID-nineteen vaccines from nine to eleven-thirty AM. And Friday, May the seventh, folks should call the clinic for an appointment. And also congratulations to the Good Shepherd Clinic for receiving a thousand dollars from the Amacola EMC Roundup Program. And that program is if you agree to enter into it, you you pay a little bit to round your bill up and that offsets the the cost for these awards. So congratulations to the Good Shepherd Clinic. Tire Amnesty Day will be held from seven AM to five PM Saturday. That's May the eighth at the transfer station on Burke Creek Road. There will be a maximum of ten standard car pickup truck tires only per load. No commercial vehicle tires accepted, heavy-duty, Bobcat tires, semi-truck, tractor-trailer or agricultural tires. And no tires will be accepted with mud, dirt, debris or rims attached. This event is free to Dawson County residents only and is not open to tire companies. So I also am excited to to bring before you today the introduction of a new Public Works Director, Denise Farr. Denise previously served as the, as the Dawson County Engineer and brings a broad range of experience that will move Dawson County forward. So if you would just join me in welcoming Denise and she'll be more than happy to.
Stand up, stand up so everybody can see you. Everybody look at her.
Welcome aboard.
And that concludes my report.
Questions for the county manager? Questions for the county manager?
What were the hours on tire amnesty?
On the tire amnesty, it's from seven AM to five PM Saturday, May the eighth.
Other questions?
I thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Dave. County Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report other than that we do anticipate executive session.
Okay, and we're gonna be talking about potential litigation and land acquisition.
Do we have land acquisition? Oh, yes, sir. Both of those.
All right, so that concludes our work session. We will take a few minutes to get prepared for our voting session. Thanks to all of you for being with us today and those online as well. And we'll take a few-minute break. We'll be back with the voting session. Thank you.